I'd like to call to order the monthly meeting of the AVON Board of Education. If everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I always like to begin our meetings by reading the mission statement in order to get us all in the right frame of mind as to what our ultimate goals are. Our mission is to inspire each student of joy and passion for learning and a commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. It's always a great segue for our AVON achievers as well. So I'd like to invite Ms. Wallace, and I'm going to have Jeff Fleischman join you as a board member so that you can call forward the students that you'd like to recognize. And that's probably, if you want to come up right to the sign so that you can get on the camera, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Happy Tuesday. It is still Tuesday. So Mr. Fleischman and I will start by recognizing Declan Mahoney. Declan, do you want to come up and we, I'll publicly embarrass you next to me? So we are recognizing Declan as an AVON achiever for Declan's dedication to scholarship, community service, and leadership in school. He finds great joy in helping out fellow students. He's a member of our Safety Committee and co-president of the Student Council. He brings ideas and feedback to every meeting that he attends. Declan participated in the Unified Basketball Program, and he previously volunteered time during Flex to support and interact with our students in special education classes. Congratulations, Declan. And next, I'll call up Abigail Chu. Abigail is being recognized for her dedication to scholarship, community service, and leadership in school. She's a devoted student who's passionate about her academics and extracurricular activities. Abigail is a member of the Student Council, the AMS Craft Club, the Principals Advisory Council. She volunteers in the AMS Library during Flex. She played field hockey, and in her free time, she participates in the Relay for Life fundraiser. Congratulations.
So thank you, congratulations. I can honestly say that I've had the advantage of having known Abby and Declan for a bit now, and they are two characters that we are going to see soar every year that they are moving through AVON. You guys are amazing. I'm not surprised at all that you would reach out and help out even more because that's just within your character. Seeing you on the playground when I used to do recess duty, I could see it then, and now you're going off to high school next year, so congratulations. Thank you for being a part of our community and showing and setting an example for the rest of our students. So I just want one more round of applause for you guys. So we, as a board, also recognize that a lot of you have come to enjoy this moment with these students. If this is your sole purpose for joining us, you are welcome to dismiss yourselves and we won't be offended. And then we'll just move through. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so now, could I have a motion to approve the Board of Education's special meeting minutes from January 13th, 2020?
So moved.
By David, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we have a motion to approve the Board of Education's special meeting minutes from January 15th, 2020? Want to do it again, David? Okay, second.
I'm going to pass on that one just because I wasn't having any.
I'll second it.
That's very fair. Okay, Jeff seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye with one abstention?
Yep.
Okay. Board of Education's regular monthly meeting, a motion to approve January 21st. All right, David will move that one. How about a second for there? Lisa will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That one passes unanimously. And lastly, Board of Education's special meeting minutes from January 27th, 2020. All right, David, got it? And second?
Sure.
All right, Jason, seconds, all in favor? Aye? Okay, that passes unanimously. So now, the next part is communication from the public. If any of you have come here to speak to us tonight, I'm going to start a new tradition, I think I'm going to call it. Now that we also have a new board member and it's also been brought to my attention that it's helpful to offer clarity to some of the parameters around public comment, as I do the mission statement at the beginning of the meeting, you're probably just going to get used to me reading this part as well, just so that it becomes good habit, good practice. This comes directly from the Connecticut Association for Board of Education Members. It was in one of their recent newsletters, and I thought it applied nicely. So along with the three-minute rule, speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board encourages members of the public to address complaints concerning individual district personnel through the proper chain of command. The chairperson may direct the member of the public to the appropriate means to address concerns brought before the board. However, the board will not respond with action, but will take comments under advisement and direct the comments to the appropriate staff member to address outside of the board meeting. So hopefully that's helpful. Is there anyone here who would like to take part? All right, I got some practice with saying that, so here we go. So we'll move right along. Thank you. Items of information, we don't have our students with us this evening, so we'll move right to the financial report with Ms. Mashad.
Good evening. It's already that time of year for the mid-year sort of report and recap. If you don't mind, I'm just going to do a little look back, fiscal year today, last year to this year. The only Object Code where there was a variance that was distinguishable between last year and this year as far as our expenditure habits was in Object Code 200. That's the benefits line, and that is only because I performed the journal entry for health insurance and related fees in the month of January, whereas I performed them in November, December this year, so I'm about a month behind. That's good. Other than that, the trending looks very, very similar year over year. I'll just bring your attention to some items that happened since the 12/31/19 financials. So in Object Code 300, we've had several payments relating to special education evaluations and consultants. As you know, those continually increased during the spring because of the related IPs that are being readdressed. And then Object Code 600, we had January 1, many of our district licenses and software, that's the renewal date, even though we do try to get everything on the fiscal year. There are certain licenses that they just renew on January 1, so that was also the largest expenditure difference from the month prior. Other than that, the look back, it looks pretty standard.
Thank you. Were there any questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Mashad. Committee reports, so Curriculum and Professional Practices, Jackie isn't here tonight. I guess I could quickly summarize. We did have a special meeting to discuss the program of studies. That was our January 27th meeting, so that was very helpful. We had members of all the departments from the high school join us and speak a bit to the different classes that are being offered and wrapped it all behind offering new courses and different aspects of that. We do have a slightly smaller presentation tonight by Mr. Rehnquist, so I won't go into it too deeply, but that was our last meeting of Curriculum and Professional Practices. So I will move on to finance with Jay.
So the main topics discussed our last finance committee meeting were the transfers which are in the package, our audit, which is going to be part of our new business, and also the RFQ, which is also in the package, and we'll once more detail on that. Our next meeting is March 10th at 6:00 PM.
Jason, negotiations?
Yeah, very quickly, negotiations with our food service workers continue to be ongoing, and we actually just, a few hours ago, had our first meeting with the secretaries, so we'll have those two in the hopper going forward.
All right, thank you. Policy, we don't have Laura with us here tonight. We did have a recent meeting, and we do have a first read in our under-new business tonight. Is there anything else you think I should say to do about in particular?
Yeah, Laura and I would have done it together, but I can do it under the updates if you want to keep moving.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, thank you. And liaison reports, Jackie is our representative to the CREAT Council, and I hadn't heard that there was any update from her on that, so I guess we'll keep moving ourselves along. So now we're on to the chairs' report. I wanted to use this time to remind board members that an email did go out about Makerspace tour at Pine Grove and Thompson Brook.
Enrichment clusters.
To show the enrichment clusters in person and the Makerspaces, so you can actually see the students interacting with it and the staff that participate as well on March 12th. So I'm hoping that some of you will be able to make yourselves available for that. I intend to be there. I know they're very proud of it.
Nine.
Is it the ninth?
Yes.
Oh, I had it. I apologize. Thank you for correcting me. Okay, so March 9? All right. So please try to check your calendars and see if you can be available for that. I think we're starting at like 8:30 and going, and they're the two buildings that are near each other, so they're within walking distance if it's a nice day. Also, Dr. Carnemola and I attended the Legislative Breakfast that was held last week, and basically it's an opportunity for the senator who heads up the Education Committee to listen to the members of the Connecticut Association of Board of Education Members, as well as superintendents that are in the room, to hear what concerns are, what's brewing, and take that into consideration when they move forward. They are putting forward a list of different topics that they'd like to address. If anybody's interested in seeing that, I believe you all got it by email as well that had the list, so I'm happy to pass this around if you want to take a peek at that. I don't know if you had any specific questions about it. All right, so I'll keep this here if anybody wants to see that. That moves into another idea that I'd like you to just percolate on. I'm just kind of putting the seeds out there. I think a lot of you are aware that West Hartford put together a resolution to the state regarding changing school times. The biggest issue that I think we've all agreed on in times that we've discussed the issue is that the state really has to participate for it to actually work, because if one town at a time does it, it doesn't help with schedules when you have to interact with the school districts in terms of athletics, even before school activities, and if everybody's working together in this fashion, it could actually be doable. So I'm just putting it out there to consider if we want to think about the idea of adding a resolution of our own to show support for it. So just consider that if, that's the only way I think we'd have actual momentum on it, is if the state kind of joined in and showed support for that. So I just wanted to put a little plug out there. I don't know if Dr. Carnemola will speak a little bit more into that, but I thought this was a good opportunity.
Could I just ask a question, and I'll have to put you on the spot, but is there a state law now that speaks to our times or no?
No.
So they're prompting them to think about it. So if that happens, then that means we could actually participate in an effective way that works. So it's really just the conversation stage at this point, but they're considering it at a state level.
All right, thank you.
All right. I also wanted to take a moment to just acknowledge the huge Amazon donation that was provided by one of our AVON parents, Walt Evans. If you noticed it in the consent calendar, it's over $25,000 worth of supplies, and apparently he's wanting to continue to donate to us, so we're very grateful for that. So I wanted to take a moment, rather than just passing it through and acknowledge what an impressive amount of money that is and supplies for us and the students to participate in. Other than that, I will pass it on to Dr. Carnemola for the superintendent report.
Thank you. So on our hiring report, you'll notice that we were able to fill our special ed teacher vacancy at Roy Brook, our new person, LeFevre, LeFevre, I think it actually is, began on February 10th. We're happy we were able to do that, and likewise, we have a long-term substitute teacher for grade six math at Thompson Brook, and we'll be looking to fill that permanently moving forward. We also were able to hire three par educators that we have been in need of at Thompson Brook, the middle school, and Roy Brook. And we have hired a new assistant director of nutrition services who started just a couple of days ago with us, and that is the district-wide position, also in line with region 10, so that's food services as a whole. And as we already knew, we have the resignation of Annabelle Trinket Clapp, who's a district-wide speech and language pathologist. If you look at the enrollment, there's not a ton to report except for the fact that we are about, we are four students above where we were in January, and we are 23 more than we were at the same time last year, district-wide. From a strategic planning standpoint, we have been meeting with building administrators. As you know, we meet as an entire team every two weeks. We, just this past week, a week ago, had, Wednesday, had a session again with, as a whole administrative team, with Dr. Valaire, doing continued calibration around what rigorous teaching and learning looks like from a district-wide standpoint. We've been making good progress in those conversations, and I think we all as a group are working very well together and learning a lot about our path forward when we are looking at the entire system of teaching and learning from pre-K to 12. So we're continuing there. We're also continuing, and we did in the previous meeting, with our check-ins with our own strategic plan, district-wide strategic plan, blueprint, but also the school-wide district, excuse me, the school-wide improvement plans, referred to as the school blueprints. We've talked about them together as a group and check in for where we are in terms of the goals. And Dr. Rusak and I are also meeting with building administrators individually in small groups. For example, we met with the secondary administrators, in other words, the middle school and the high school today, to talk about where we are in terms of the school plans and the goal setting and progress toward where we expect to land the proverbial plane, so to speak. You know, it's February, the year passes quickly all of a sudden, so we are looking at what there is left to do before the school year is over, what we will address in the summertime to prepare at the end of this year and the summertime to prepare for next year, and what the longer range pieces of that are. And I just want to thank, again, the entire administrative team, but our school administrators who have been working very diligently and trying to manage a lot of projects that are going on in relation to our district and school plans, and I appreciate that. We are nearly at the point for ourselves to be able to bring back to the board also a check-in, so to speak, more specifically on the goals, but we have been working closely as a team first to go through that process, which, as you know, we started the mid-year point when we all got together for a retreat in Hartford. I mentioned that at the last board meeting that we had, I think. The entire administrative team spent an evening looking over our plan and related materials and starting to rechart our course forward, which is normal at this time of the year, because we've picked up extra goals along the way. And someone said to me yesterday, I think it was Dr. Rusak who sent to me in a district meeting where we were doing the same, stop putting things on the board. We haven't, we'd like to see more things come off. We keep adding things on that we're working on. That's the nature of the business. So we will bring back, I will bring back a mid-year check-in more specifically to when we have finished doing that. But that's the big picture about where we are right now, working with the administrators. I think we are meeting with the elementary folks next week. So we will hopefully finish out our school pieces then. One thing I wanted to say to the board and also to the administrators, again, I think, again, you get a sense when you look back at the number of meeting minutes that we had to approve tonight, how often we have been together working on budget and other items, including the piece we'll see again here tonight. I just wanted to thank you all for your time and efforts that have been put into that. We've done, again, tremendous amount of work in a small amount of time between putting together the 2021 budget and also looking at our course of studies for the high school. And within the past month, that was, I think, a very informative meeting. So thank you for your time. Thank you again to the high school administration and the department coordinators who came out and spent time with us that night. We all appreciated that. Just wanted to make sure I acknowledged publicly. For our upcoming committee meetings, April 10 typically presents a problem when we're trying to schedule our committee meetings, because, as you know, we have a number of meetings to be at as a board, and also some of the administrators are present with us for the townwide budget meetings. So those that we need to make sure we're at is one thing. We have two holidays in the month, too, and we have the week that schools are out session. So I forwarded to the Finance Committee a request and had Shirley send out a doodle poll, because I was doing it in priority order of the committees that I knew had to meet. Not that we don't have work to do in some of the other committees. For example, I'm looking for a policy committee meeting date as we speak. I'm also looking for a Curriculum and Professional Practices committee meeting. But the Finance Committee meeting is a necessity, because in the April, before the April board meeting, we need to have a conversation about supplemental appropriation at the Finance Committee level and then be able to move it forward to the board, because that's the time of year that we have that conversation and send our requests to the town. So that is the impetus behind my request, that we try to find a meeting first for finance, and then I will go back through the rest.
So I just want to say Shirley did send out a list of potential times. If you cannot make those times, you can at least check, you can call in, because we want to at least have members participate in one way or another, so members on the committee can try to do that in the next few days.
Thank you. Couple of things. So Any, do you want to wait, me to wait until we get to the new business and speak about the policy? I'll wait until we get there. The other, the other thing also to note, please check the calendar, the district calendar related to the upcoming meetings. Shirley has been sending them out for the townwide budget meetings and negotiations and so on. You know, we have a ton of things scheduled right now, as Mr. Inthe Medico mentioned. We already are engaged in the, Negotiations Committee is already engaged in the food services negotiations and the secretaries. The paraprofessional union is also, that schedule is starting. So with those dates, we have the townwide budget meeting dates, and the calendar's filling up quickly, so I just wanted to remind you, and I talked to Shirley again earlier today to make sure that all the dates are accurate on our calendar. So just a reminder to look there, and we'll continue to send the reminders to board members for the meetings we need you at.
Just a clarification, can I ask? Just, I think, what I clarify, you mentioned the strategic update that you said, I think you said you're planning on bringing to the board, a more detailed update? Did I hear that?
Well, that would be part of my evaluation conversation, yes.
So it's one of the same, it's not a separate?
Depending on how we want to handle it, if we want, if we would like to schedule another retreat to look at that, we could also do that. We haven't, we haven't discussed that yet as a board, so I didn't, I didn't want to put it out there.
I just, I wanted to get a, if you were planning on going over one of the upcoming board meetings, I was curious if you had a date in mind or which meeting next one's going to happen. But it sounds like there's, we're open to options, is what it sounds like.
Right.
Potentially having another retreat.
Right. I, we could, we could have another board retreat to talk specifically about it. I wasn't thinking about doing it necessarily in the board meeting in the sense of how much time it might take us to go, to go through. I don't know that this is the venue that you would want to do it in. Open to doing that, too, but I think we could have a conversation and decide if we want to schedule another meeting as a board to go through for what other venue you might like to discuss in it. I mean, I think it's something we do at the end of the year as we replan for next year, regardless, so.
Okay, Prandam?
Thank you for the clarification.
All right.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, items A and B?
So moved.
All right, Jay moves, do I have a second?
Sure.
All right, Jason. Jason has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, passed unanimously. Now we'll move on to new business. So I'll call Mr. Rehnquist forward, and then you can call whoever else would like to join you to give us a summary of the course of studies process.
Well, thank you very much for inviting us back. And I just wanted to pay your due, Todd Dyer, Director of School Counseling, as well as Dr. Romeo, Dr. LeVille, who's at the high school. I asked everybody to join us here only because it's a team I personally put your son in. We just think it's important that they're with us here. Again, thank you to the Board of Education and the Central Office staff, their, sorry, for their own contributions, as well as the high school staff, including the coordinators who were here back on February 7th, shared their expertise, and we did not ask them to come back again. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows the valuable input that they have really created in the course of studies. Abigail Chu has already read the mission statement, which she does. Do you think it's important, of course, the studies does reveal for focus area goals to some extent as far as student levels, personal relationships, communication partnerships, and also systems? Just quickly, some changes from the last year's course of studies. There is a note in there, a potential change to state by Dr. Dyer for 2023 students. We modified the description of course levels, moving from just AP, ECE, but a blended college experience, because we've also added a tonsus community college, of course, as well. We've included the designation of CP for all college part classes, just so that it's clear. Instead of writing just at available college level, we say it's CP. Business education has its own section now, as that, our hope is to grow that program in that area. And I just want to point out, we mentioned A.J. Schrag as one of our business teachers who's really headed up that avenue. Lisa Roelander talked about the SEAL by Literacy that's available to all students now. Said information is included in the course of studies. That presentation was also made available to senior class on February 7, excuse me, we're here February 3rd. The, just some other changes that we have, Ultra II, advanced Ultra II, a renaming of some courses, as we'll go into a little bit more in detail. Applied topics in that, and then we are looking for those to be approved, so that we can, they can move from the working draft, the course of studies that's out there, onto the regular course. Again, several more ECE offerings, and they've played a buzz already with some of the students, junior juniors, who see this as an opportunity to take elective in the English department. So they, the idea that one thought they can get ahead of senior year and we can ask them to be the vibrant, realize that it just gets elective. So that was exciting that, you know, students were that much, showed that amount of interest. The European history is picked up as an AP, ECE course as well, and then there's the Human Rights Course, which is a, we both taught, we both English, and Social Studies, so the class is the size of about 40, which you have two certified teachers in there. Civil Rights Movement, Classical Study, Religious Studies, again, more electives that are available for students who have a history in Social Studies interest. Inprol for the Real World and Acting Technique, so we're getting all student interests in that percussion section that they run. Again, the idea that percussionists are advanced setting, they don't necessarily get all the attention that they would like. So it's an opportunity rather be to learn the same music as the band, so they can actually provide performance, but it's an opportunity to really have more fine tune, instruction in that area. And based on student requests, we've added Spanish 6 for next year. The informational letter went out. Hopefully those of you that are high school parents who saw that, that is dated February 7. Creative Elective Exploration Life was held on the 13th of February, where teacher volunteers came in, so that, you know, arts and performs music, as well as the electives for English and social studies, and visits were all available. Science was now in more of the science classrooms, excuse me, so that parents and students had to actually walk around. And it was noted that there's, they have a huge selection available, a lot of physical freshmen, because they still need more of the base support, but there is opportunities, at least they've been thinking what direction they want to go and what their interest may be, so they've actually explored that. may be, so they can actually explore that. On the last Wednesday and Thursday, coming off the four-day weekend, aligns perfectly with the board policy available in assessments, that it's an opportunity for teachers to have that one-on-one conversation with students for those classes that require a recommendation. They have, just, for example, if you walked up to the North Plain, there was a bonus for English department, is, you saw a student desk and two chairs outside almost every classroom, they're having those private conversations. Went into the science labs, you should notice there was students doing group work for a risk-free lab, I'd say, because the teacher was at visitor's desk, talking to the students as well, others, you know, they've been doing independent seat work, but again, the idea of having that conversation with students. There is the override process, students are not able to pick that sheet up until starting Monday, we want to let students have an opportunity to think about that. With that, next week, on Thursday and Friday, we have parent conferences, which we rescheduled from April after the third quarter to move it up, so that it aligns more closely with when the action is happening as far as are you hearing for next year, so that you can sit down with, with that teacher, you know, have face-to-face conversation, have a child with you, so that it's really a sort of a group decision. And then there's a sort of student communication, starting with the announcements, and then while we were going through the other minutes, I remember I needed to send out a reminder email to all students, so that went out. And then, of course, I think one of the most important steps is meeting the counselor, looking at a schedule, it's going to be balanced for them. We're really, well, before we get to any questions, I'm going to ask Mr. Dyer to speak about the Ultra 2, advanced Ultra 2. Was he, was he, was he sort of?
The change to the math curriculum was a collaboration with the department, and just smaller, the chair came to our attention, and we're, as you're hiding here, the curriculum matches up with students' plans, moving off to secondary. This year especially, there's some of the schools' nomination that have changed their requirements for math, and they will be adding math on Alpha 2. And so the math department looked at their curriculum and really found that the name and the content didn't match up. And so this is a change to represent really what we're teaching, and also represent the two levels, the advanced math and then the Alpha 2. And so when it reads on the transcript, students will realize we're having the Alpha 2 work, but just not having that name on the transcript here. So we really feel that this is what I'll give this one looking forward. It will definitely help the students that are going to Alpha 2, versus the advanced Alpha 2, as they progress to a more advanced math. As the students were still progressing from the past course, the rename, but the, the introduction to the two, two levels on itself, the same way, the transcript, so students had a shift, so we had ways to represent that on the hand, to be able to, it's like for our place.
And then in a nutshell, if we can add more detail to that at the February 3rd, but if there's additional questions, we can, or we can answer for you at the start.
I would like to offer some observations, that's all right?
Yeah. It's hard, it's a little bit hard for us to hear you talking, because of the fans behind us.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So this is my first full year, anyway, and last year I saw a lot of purposeful conversations with students. And I'm excited again to see that the illustrators themselves walked around on that launch day. The students were in the hallway talking to teachers, they were talking to each other, and over the courses last week, we seen a lot of volume in the counseling offices, who's coming down to check on the counselors, for cross-check, makes sense, positively working in their four-year plan. And it really, I think, a purposeful conversation, we had the parents, with their teachers, and with the counselors, it was really helping to plan out their courses, so I'm excited for what's happening.
Do Board members have any questions?
So once again, I want to thank all of you for all of your hard work and putting this together. I understand the environment, committed to this. And I've got a sense from I've been in the building, the excitement of the students signing up for classes next year, and looking forward to what they're going to be taking. One concern that I have is, this year, the students did not receive their schedules until, I believe, the end of the summer, the fall, right before school started. Some years it was given to them in the spring, some years, you know, over the years I've been on the Board, I've seen it handled different ways. And I know students and staff, it was challenging to get everything done with classes starting. So I am hoping, I ask question, if it's possible to have the schedules given to the students, you know, come May or June, as opposed to wait until August and/or September. I know a lot of students, you know, are anxious when they didn't have everything in place, and they happened to wait until they came that first day of school to try to fix their schedule and make sure they're in the proper classes. So just knowing the end of the school year, that you have your class and your schedule in place, would be valuable, so.
One of the, in order to make sure that students are, where they're comfortable at, where the parents are comfortable at, you know, we have that, the override process holding on Sunday first, but what we, so from March 2nd, May 1st, so we give them, you know, two months, what that does, in the interim, you take all the recommendations that are in place in there, to look at, okay, how many sections, who signed up for what courses, what levels, what sections do we need, and then part of coordinators that put in place, you know, who's going to teach what. And so, in a perfect world, so the, as the schedule is built, we need to go back and at times redefine what sections are available, what can run. I think what we can do, our goal this year is that June 1st, we'd be able to let students know what courses they do have, in terms of, especially for the upperclassmen, if they have more electives than the lowerclassmen would. But the, I guess, I don't want to make a promise that we can have a student schedule for everyone on June 1st. I think we can certainly let them know, because we had all of our staffing at that point in time, we do have a couple of retirements coming up, and so that, knowing who's going to be in here and be able to teach, and what, and what courses they can teach, it may leave it a little suspect. I do know in the past, you know, if one of us, Thompson, or you know, your previous president, want to make sure all the schedules are out, is it, yeah, Thompson, there's no problem. The, the flexibility here, I think what I can say with clarity is that, I think, on June 1st, we, students can certainly know what they're going to take, maybe not just when, unless my colleagues still know that.
I think the challenge of trying to finalize the schedule by that date, like before the end of the school year, is very difficult, like say, at a high school, especially to building schedules. So typically, they're not finalized until right before school, or sometime in August, to make sure that we have everything that's set as possible, so we'll build up the school and the kids are ready to go. And I found this year, you know, we did have a scheduling of, of first weeks of school, and in those decisions, those assumptions with the school council, I think that's very important as well, as we start up the school, so we're going to have really purposeful decisions about, did their schedule make sense? If they reflected earlier this summer, and does it still make sense as we move into the school?
Again, thank you for all your work. There's a lot of data that we can get from the registration process, and I know we've had a lot of conversations regarding the change in the process for students to get into advanced placement. So my hope is, even in the rawest form, in the next couple of months, if you can share with us what the enrollment, the estimated enrollment numbers look like for advanced placement courses, I know the Board's hope was to see the increase, so I would appreciate that at a future Board meeting.
I think Shirley provided the information, is there registering for that now? I think it'd be, you know, important for me to send that through to the superhead.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Any other Board members?
I'd say just to follow up on what Jeff said, do we track virtual high school attendance closely? Is that something that we can also get?
Well, yeah, we can certainly look at students who want to take the courses that are offered here, that the, the other courses that are offered here, and we just can't get into their schedule, or into, we don't run it, because we have two, two of numbers, we can provide that information.
Through the chair. I want to be clear though, because providing the virtual high school information is more difficult at this time of the year than it is after school starts. So providing, because generally speaking, students register more for those courses. After this year is over, they've gone through the process, and, or they come in at the beginning of the school year, and they know they, they didn't get X class, it wouldn't fit into their schedule every once in a while, that's one of the reasons that they, that they take a virtual high school course, or, to your point, because it's not offered here at all. But I, I would say that generally speaking, that number is going to be not usable, generally speaking, at this time of the year. You might have a couple enrollments, but correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, you're going to see the majority of those after the start of the next school year.
Yeah, so we can give current data of who's in the virtual high school.
Right.
And we can look at, yes, right now, it's a general interest in readjust, not necessarily an actual registration, because that process doesn't happen until right before the school starts, the school year next year. So we can see that number, what it looks like in the spring, but I think as Dr. Primal said, is, in the fall, what happens is students either come back with interest, or they don't have a class that, or they see one that's more interested, and they, then all of the adjust. So our goal in the fall is very different than it is right now in terms of interest.
So it sounds like it tends to be more reactive versus proactive? It's almost like a reaction to not having space in their schedules or running a class?
Not being able to take a course. So for example, if there were, I think a good example would be a course that isn't going to run because there was only maybe three, three students who were interested in it, you might find, so one or more, all three of those students may say, I'm going to take that class online, because it's not being offered here, because we couldn't, we didn't have enough enrollment. And from our implementation piece with virtual high school, generally speaking, that is how it has worked, because our teach, the expectation, generally speaking, is that you will attend a class taught by one of our teachers. So we start there, and if for some reason that's not possible, we default to the, to the virtual high school model. So to your point, yes, it's reactive in that way, that more often than not, it's a result of, of course, not being able to be offered through numbers, or because, for example, we didn't have a certified teacher for that, if it was a, let's say, for argument's sake, it was, and I'm going to use this example, because we've talked about this when I was asked the question at another Board meeting. So let's say a student wanted to take Chinese 3, and we didn't have a teacher certified to teach Chinese 3. This is a bad example, for the reason that virtual high school doesn't offer Chinese 3.
Which they did.
But if they did, this would be an example of that, being able to take that course there. So that, that's usually what we see it for. Also, at times, students that are out of school for an extended period of time, sometimes with an illness, or some other type of homebound instruction, they see taking some of their credits online. So generally speaking, to your point, it's used as a supplement.
Are there circumstances where a student is interested in a certain field that isn't usually offered in extra dollars? Our knowledge, if that's, if that's one way to deal with that question.
What I've seen this last year is that Avon has a very rich offering, and many of our offerings cover most of the interest area that students may want, for the virtual high school, so they'll look at the catalog, and say, well, it's here, I'll just take it here on site with my teacher, in this respect.
So do they have access to that virtual high school catalog too?
Yeah, it's available at all times, really easy to go online and see, there's over 200 courses that are there. What I found, again, is either a niche course that the students are interested in offering, or one that just won't fit in their schedule, and they're looking to bolster their schedule.
I just wanted to ask a follow-up question to Jay's question, because I didn't necessarily understand the answer. Is there a date where students can expect to have an actual schedule? I know June 1st, you said, isn't realistic, which is fine, but I don't know that I have a date, is there a date they can expect to have a schedule for next year?
The goal would be early August, I think, because by that time, we'd have a number of students that maybe moved into the district and moved out, because if somebody was out, then all things come down a little bit, so they haven't, you know, we run schedules that way. I think we'll have solid information at the end of this week, with all the student registrations in the envelope, and next week, they'll put the, our coordinators start running a number of sessions. And again, I do think, having that two-month window, allow parents and students to have a conversation with the teachers, and part of coordinators, and counselors, in terms of the override process. And it doesn't assume an override to get in, or it's going to be an override to get out, in seeking as well, you know, because they're going to look at their schedule in its entirety.
Just a quick follow-up. Is there a way, maybe by the end of the year, at least to give a confirmation that course is scheduled? Not necessarily periods, teachers, or so forth, but by the end of the month, the end of the school year, we know we may not be running these courses, so here's what you're currently registered for. Can, can something be formalized?
Our goal for that is June 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you for making yourselves available on two evenings for our, our purposes to be able to ask those good questions, so we appreciate the work that you put in. And I, now I know you're hoping that we're going to vote this through, so if I could have a motion to approve the Avon High School 2020 to 2021 course of studies?
So moved.
Okay, Jeff moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody's opposed or abstained, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. So now, the Avon High School Wrestling Field Trip to Guilford, Connecticut, which already took place, and we did well, I believe?
We did.
Okay.
So our policy requires these field trips to be approved. We didn't have a Board meeting in between when the form came to us, came just after our last Board meeting, and so through our policy, as the superintendent, I can prove them to go, which I did, clearly because they're, you know, participating in championship wrestling, and so they did, they did go, I did approve it, but by our policy, I still ultimately bring it for approval.
Congratulations to Chris Jen, so one class M, 220-pound division?
Yes.
So very impressive. All right, so you don't need us to approve it then, we're just acknowledging, because you took your bill, or do you need us?
We do, we do need to approve it, yeah.
Okay.
That's why I said, ultimately, I still bring it for approval, even after.
Okay, sure. Okay, so if I could have a motion to approve the high school wrestling field trip to Guilford, Connecticut on February 21st and February 22nd?
So moved.
All right, David moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Lisa, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Good thing, okay.
To be, to be clear, and for public consumption of it, part of that is for our record-keeping and insurance and so forth, that we have an officially approved event.
Okay, so the next is the Amazon donation, estimated value of $25,834. I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more to that, we had quite the list in our packets explaining what all those pieces are, you know a little bit more about it, I don't know if you want to.
So as you mentioned previously, this was a parent who moved in, came in to register, was down in our office last year, and mentioned working at Amazon, came back at some point and said, I'd like to be able to help the district out, happy to have moved to town, happy to be here, I want to give back in some way, and I can do that through the company. And went back and forth quite a bit with Ms. Moy, with what the donations were, because this is a lot, if you look at a list, there's a lot of individual things, from chargers to markers, to Amazon Kindle devices. So thank you to Ms. Moy, who spent a lot of time going back and forth with Amazon about every last item on the spreadsheet, and trying to get evaluation from them also, because that is in line with our policy. And then.
And then actually, Ms. Moy even went and helped pick up the shipment with some other folks from the district, so two weeks ago, I believe. And we're still in the process of going through the inventory and deciding how to divvy out the supplies. But it was a huge donation and we're very grateful.
So do you need us to approve the donation?
Yes.
Okay.
So then can put it into inventory and send out a thank you letter, yes.
So the only question I have, these are just goods that Amazon as a company actually donated us as a district?
Yes. The parent who works at Amazon was the conduit for the donation.
Great.
Grateful for it.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
So Jason, do you want to move to approve the Amazon donation?
I certainly will.
All right, do I have a second? Second by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, sentience, passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to the audit findings for fiscal year 2018 to 2019. Ms. Mashad?
I'll be brief. This year, I am not able to say that we had a perfect audit. It's my first one, but I will just bring to light what the difference was. There was no material findings in any of the sample selections or the transaction history, expenditure mannerisms or anything else. So rest assured, that is all well in line with our policies and best practice procedures. This year, the federal government established new procurement standards of which the district was aware and thus did adopt the shipment input policy, model policy for purchasing. If you recall, it's policy number 3300. Upon review by the auditors, Bloom Shapiro, they have a difference of opinion regarding the procurement checklist, they're calling it, that the beds put out and what the shipment model policy depicts for procurement standards. I will say that shipment represented us gallantly. However, we still did get a deficiency on one of the pages. It's on the federal section. It is on page 117. It is labeled a significant deficiency, which nobody ever wants to see on an audit. But I would just encourage you to understand it has nothing to do with the actual practices of which we procured or expended under our policies and best practices. It strictly has to do with the policy we adopted not meeting the standards according to Bloom Shapiro's understanding of what those methods should be. Long story short, what we came out with for corrective action was shipment negotiated with Bloom on our behalf and honestly, on other districts' behalf because we're not the only one. We have a new appendix that is going to be coming forward through policy that will be attached to policy number 3300 specifically addressing these federal procurement guidelines that they're saying we're deficient in. So that's sort of the short story, but there is, there is a light at the end of the time.
So I just want to make sure I understand it. I think I do, but long story short, the violation or the deficiency on the audit was the accountants at Bloom Shapiro felt like our policies didn't comply with the federal law that just was enacted. It's not as if they found a transaction that violated something, it was the language of our policy and their opinion is accounts didn't comply with federal law.
Correct.
Thank you.
Jeff?
So what's the impact on us? What is the so what? Is it?
Just change the policy.
Is that, there's no other ramifications?
No, because nothing was procured that would be in violation of any federal policy. If it had been, we would, we would have an issue because we'd take in federal grant dollars.
So to Jason's point, this is more of a paperwork?
Yes.
Not having the correct paperwork? We were under the impression, based on advice from legal counsel, we have the correct paperwork. The auditors simply disagreed.
And legal counsel actually still disagrees with the auditors. So it's been a back and forth between shipment and Bloom Shapiro. But to be able to move this process along for us in any other districts that were in the same situation, they created this appendix. It's actually not even a, when we go through it as a policy committee, it literally is an appendix to go along with the policy. It's not even recommended changes in pieces of the policy language.
Is, is there the possibility down the line, another auditor would disagree with the new appended?
Yes.
So we could be in the same spot for following the instructions next audit? Okay. Thank you.
But we'll do what we were advised to comply.
I understand.
As you know, with the audit, we have to have a corrective action. So this is it.
Thank you.
Did you want to say? We did speak about this at length in the finance committee. I don't know, Mr. Speedback wanted to add anything in?
No, I just look at it, you know, to our, Heather, our administration's credit. I mean, anybody else who had the same law firm and accounting firm as us was facing the same situation, but we made sure that we resolved the situation because they did not agree on how it should be handled. So we came to a resolution. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you need action?
No, this is informational.
Okay.
Do you actually move you in the policy committee?
Yes.
We'll look at it and then I'll come up to the full board for action. Okay. Avon High School course proposal recommendations, which were touched on by Mr. Dyer. Does anybody have any questions about that or we need action to approve those as well? Or Donna, would you like to speak to that?
We shared curriculum professional practices and Mr. Dyer addressed the Algebra II and advanced Algebra II that were name changes. Only other one I'll speak to quickly is, we used to have a consumer math course that we're changing the title to applied topics in math and have changed some of the content because after we put personal finance in as a requirement for all of our students, we saw quite an overlap in the curriculum for those two courses. So students take personal finance and we've changed the content a bit in the consumer math to more applied topics.
So do I have a motion to approve the course proposal recommendations?
So moved.
All right, Jason moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
David, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, sentience, passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is the school facility RFQ. Is this something Ms. Mashad or?
Yeah, I'll just start with, again, we discussed this as a matter of information also in the finance committee meeting, but we don't need action on this. But we wanted, again, to be able to speak about it here because you know, there's been a tremendous amount of discussion townwide about development and planning and zoning and the potential impact of development of the school system. And so this is something that we discussed doing even last year, depending on the way things were moving forward. And after several meetings with different individuals from town, from planning and zoning, town manager and so forth, we decided that in order to be prepared for changes that could potentially come through additional development, it was in our best interest to see if we would benefit from a space utilization study, but also a review of our facilities, which is something else that, you know, we have spoken about even just in the time that I've been here. Each of the budgets that we've presented on the town side, particularly when we present the capital improvement budget, we are often asked about the systems in our schools and the lifespan of them and whether or not we have had outside advice on our HVAC systems, for example, and some of our pricier inner systems. So what we decided to do was to put together this, and it's called an RFQ because it's a request for quotes, it's not a request for proposals. Because what we are looking initially to find out is whether or not there are companies out there that would be interested in taking this study on that could provide the information we are looking for. And I say that because typically, when you are putting out an RFP for a study like this, very oftentimes, it's done with the goal in mind of school construction, either renovation or construction. And so we know of the firms out there that will answer those sorts of RFPs. This we are asking a little bit differently of questions, a little bit different of questions related to how we are utilizing the current space that we have, what different versions of districting might look like if we had to make some of those decisions. Because as you know, I have had to make some of those decisions already when it comes to kindergarten and where we have changed back and forth over the years, some of the streets between Roaring Brook or neighborhoods between Roaring Brook and Pine Grove because we are maxed out at Pine Grove, there are no more classroom spaces available. So put all of that together alongside of a, an overview of our facilities, and this is what we are asking for. We did put it out. We had our first, our meeting of potential interested firms. If you want to pick it up and add in anything that I've left out or, and explain what the process looks like from now on, Heather. I just want to put context around it as we discussed at the finance meeting.
Right. The superintendent was correct in everything that she said. An RFQ is something that you typically put out when you're unsure of the firms' either interest or even if there's qualifications out there to perform what you're asking. This is unusual because typically, it really is married to an approved or soon to be approved construction project. That's very appetizing for firms because it's a much bigger dollar amount that they would have the potential on winning. In this case, it is so unique that we opted to do this particular process. I will say, our first walkthrough that was involuntary, honestly, I was just looking to find out if we had any interest. We had 11 firms show up. And that was just last week on the 20th. It was a really quick walkthrough, very high level overview, but that was very, very encouraging, particularly as I was told by several of my colleagues that I wasn't going to get anyone for something like this. The dollar amount just simply wasn't big enough and the workload was rather large. So it's going to close on the 4th of March. At that point, we have two individuals from the town sitting on the committee and then some members from the board side. We're going to review whoever submits. Doesn't mean all 11 will submit, but perhaps we will get a fair share. We're hoping for at least four qualified. And then we will offer for them to put in a true bid and then we will review those based on the scope of work that we're looking for. But that's the process.
Thank you, Heather. And I, I may have said quotes, and if I did, I meant qualifications, request for qualifications, RFQ. The other piece, just to be clear about, as you heard Heather mention and me say, this has been in conjunction with the town. And so I know there are a lot of questions from parents and constituents about how we are working together with the town around these items. And this is a way for us to quantify that conversation by having input on both sides. And there was input from the town side even as the RFQ was developed. So they assisted us in developing it and we will all get together and go through hopefully the proposals that come in and we'll go from there.
So.
The ultimate end product is simply someone to come back and make suggestions on what our best course of action is related to the space? Whether it's simply be redistricting, whether it be shifting grades around, or even possibly other options? If we're just.
They could come back, for example, because the facilities review too and say, you know, it may not be worth your money to do this because you have an aging infrastructure in this building that you may want to consider when the repairs are X. So yes, it could be a combination.
So we don't have, at this moment, a plan going forward of what we want? We're looking for people to give us what are our best options?
Yes.
Dumb question, did review also include central office building?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And another question I've been asked, just in relation, if you've reminded me, Jeff, is related to enrollment studies. You know, we do projections forward of what you can expect to see. And that, there is a report that we have, I believe it was done in 2013. So generally speaking, it's very difficult when you pay for those sorts of enrollment reports to be accurate beyond a few years because a lot of things happen in between. So if you look at the report that we have right now versus what our enrollment is, they're not close. So it covered the years that we are currently living in, but it's no longer accurate. And if I remember, I don't want to speak incorrectly, but it was, it was a significant number of students that were different between what we have and what was projected, predicted that we would have at this point. So although we have that from the past, it's not helpful to us at present.
That was a few years ago, wasn't it?
I believe it was 2013. Because I haven't asked for that from the town also. And we have reproduced it and then looked at it and said, okay, we have it, but it's not really helpful. Because the numbers are actually high. Yes, because the numbers are higher than they were in that report. Yes.
Our numbers are higher than the report?
Yes.
Yes.
My question was, those firms that were, that came, are they qualified to do any of the work if there's work to be done? Or you will then have to seek out other firms for the actual work to be done?
So I will say, the majority of the firms from first glance were architectural firms that, that came. Given the scope of work that was written in the RFQ, they are prepared to have to subcontract themselves in order to gain the information such as an updated enrollment report to perform what would be necessary for a true study, a document to be put forward to us. Now, what we do with that information, we have not put that out there. Clearly, we're not committing to a construction project or anything of that nature. That would be a whole different process. But they are aware that there are various aspects of this.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, if we get the, I think a report is a good idea, number one, because for a long time, I've always been curious about, you know, we get these enrollment reports. Always been curious, like, where does the enrollment in a building fall with what the building could actually handle? So it sounds like this might give us at least a glimpse into that. And it'll give us some ideas on how to deal with those issues. But I guess the question I have is, will the report really give us any insight on this stuff going on on the town side? For instance, if there was an influx of, I'm going to make up a number, 250 new students because of the development. Does it give us insight on that or is it really just kind of give us an idea of what the building's capacity is?
They would, they would be looking for the, that information to be provided by the town by planning and zoning. So, and, and I have seen some variations of that even at present, depending on who the developer is that's, that's presented the plan, for example. Or in the last case, I believe before the last planning and zoning meeting, the town actually utilized services of a firm to look at the potential impact. So to your point, they won't, I believe, make up, so to speak, the numbers of students that might come to us, but they would be looking to the town for how many potential units is it, how many bedrooms? And then they employ whatever version of the formula it is that they have for how many students that they bring us. And that seems to be one of the pieces of different information that I have seen. Because one person you speak to tells you, you're going to get X amount of students out of 250 units and you speak to someone else at a different firm and you get a different number. So.
The part of it I've always struggled with a little is, I don't think we as a Board of Education could really do anything about how many homes are built in town, how many new students come and go. But I do think we need a tool where if something is approved on the town side for new homes or occupancy. That we can say, look, if this happens, this influx happens, here's what we would need to do to react. It sounds like that's what this report would do.
Yes. And in speaking with officials on the town side, what I was told, and they've been very helpful and I'm grateful for as much information as they've given and much communication, I think, as we've had open for the past six or eight months, specific to this issue, longer than that, but very specific to this issue. We were told that based on some of what has been proposed of planning and zoning, it should be that the shortest amount of time we would have would be a year to be prepared. And so even though we had been talking about this as a possibility, when I heard that, I said, we better get this done before the end of this year if possible. Because if we are one school year out, we're going to need this information to make those decisions before we're talking about '21, '22.
And if we got into a situation like that, where we had to make a change in a year, I assume a report like this would help us. We had to go back to the town and say, well, look, we now have to spend, I'm going to make up a number, $500,000 to accommodate this and this should not be a surprise because we did the study and we all knew about it.
Yes.
Not to get completely off tangent, but following what has gone on on the town side of planning and zoning and reviewing the public documents that have been out there, some of the proposals, projections provided by developers are factually inaccurate based upon the enrollment numbers that we see here. And they even say that they're based on calculations where enrollment has gone down. We know for the last We know for the last six years that enrollment has gone up, and we have the public records to show that. Is there that reverse conversation? Are we, what is the tool in place for us to provide the town side, even as such a committee like Planning and Zoning, what our actual enrollment numbers are?
We have been giving them, when we've been asked for them, yes. It gets harder when they're looking for projections.
Right.
Meaning, okay, we can't speak to how many we know we'll have for kindergarten next year, for example. So when we've been asked those sorts of questions, and I spoke to the person, one of the people that the town employed to give this report at the last planning and zoning meeting that I mentioned, and I was trying to assist in the hypothetical projections of what it might look like if X, Y, or Z happened. So it's hard to pinpoint, though. So that particular conversation, I believe it's about Avon Woods, right? And it was, okay, so if this many units went in, do you think you would need another bus? So those are the ways that they've attempted to find the information, and there's not an exact formula for us to give it to them. We go by the number of units they tell us it will be and how many students, based on the current ratio, I think is one of the ways they do it. So they say, currently, we have X number of units and you have Y number of students from those. So mathematically, it should mean that if we put that many more, the ratio will change by this. I think that's generally speaking how it's been done. But it's just a difficult projection because, as you know, primarily, we've been seeing the increase of enrollment in the elementary grades. And that's what's making it more difficult because the capacity is less.
But along those same lines, as Jeff pointed out, I mean, I've looked at some of those reports, and I think the developers are looking to show how it's going to bring in less students, and we realize that's not a reality. I mean, our numbers are public, so they can use them. They're not accurately using those numbers, but also they project on how some students will be moving from houses into their apartments, which I don't know how they know, some way are going to happen. But their goal is to show that it's not going to cost the town, so I don't think their reports are accurate to help us.
Which is why it's good to have our own report.
Right.
There we are.
And just so everybody here knows, each month I send a copy of our enrollment report to Tom Harrison on the Board of Finance and Heather McGuire for Town Council. So as chairs, we're keeping each other informed.
I just question if it trickles down to the boards and commissions?
I don't.
I can't speak to the generalization of the boards and commissions, but I can say that, you know, Mr. Peck, for example, has sought information directly from us. So we have provided accurate information.
I wasn't doubting RF.
No, no, I know you weren't. I was just going to say, frankly, I'm not certain where some of those numbers came from either. When it came back to me and I read it, I had no idea where some of the numbers came from. They were numbers that we had turned over.
Especially because we've been so vocal, particularly at the elementary level.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just one last question. If we get the, if we get the home run or we get the four shortlisted firms that all want to do the report, then we fall to our, we're always qualified bid, just like we do on an RFP, that's how it would work?
That's correct.
I don't want to drag it on any longer, but I will say this, you reminded me by the last question, regarding the accuracy. I think another part of the issue is, there isn't straight math involved here of number of rooms to number of bodies, like you can do when you're talking about fire code. And so, as I've said, and to be clear too, while we're looking for an RFQ like this, of course, we've gone through an inventory to the rooms. We know how every room is being used in every building. We pretty much knew that to begin with. We really looked at it. Mr. Altman's has been out there, he's worked with building administrators and us to quantify that. I think that some of the information developers had came from those straight statistics of, what's the capacity of this building by fire code? Okay, well, you have this many classrooms. Okay, this is used as a, this room is used as a first-grade classroom. This room is used for a special program that we need to maintain. So there aren't, there aren't 25 first graders in here, there's X amount of students that are engaged in whatever that program is. That's part of the nuance that's lost when you don't truly look at the, how the space is being utilized.
We could put 35 kindergarteners in one class, can't we? That was sarcasm.
And then there's that.
That was sarcasm.
And sometimes there's a lack of awareness related to accessibility for students too and codes related, for example, that kindergarteners need to have the exits that they need to have and be on the first floor and so on. So some of that, there's a thought that we could make moves of classrooms that we actually cannot.
Excellent. I think this was a conversation that has been asked for for a while, so I think it was good. Does anybody else have any other thoughts? It doesn't require action, so I'm going to move to the next item, Policy 6144. It's controversial issues, it's the first read, so again, we're not taking action tonight, we're just discussing it. It's been discussed in policy. If the full board has any questions or comments to add to their work. Jay?
So in looking at the page that explains the complaint on handling of a controversial issue.
Yes.
The wording was changed from citizen to parent or guardian. And my question is, why was that changed? And also, should we include student as possibly completed this form? Because they're the ones in the classroom that they see an issue that they want to refer.
Oh, the conversation we had around this form. We didn't, we didn't, thank you. We didn't have the student conversation. So the form was changed to parent or guardian as a result of legal advice that when we're talking about what's happening in the classroom, that's who we would expect to know the nature of the complaint more than a citizen. To your point, student, I think, would fit in there fine, and I wouldn't have any problem with, I know we're not, with going back to do that, defer also to the other members of the policy committee. But that was the reason it was changed to parent or guardian instead of citizen, that we're talking about a student's educational experience, and so it's their parent or their guardian that should be making the complaint, not whomever.
Just any citizen in town?
Yes.
Okay, if you're saying it may be okay with the committee to look at including student?
Yes, because it fits the same definition that I think that we were given and we discussed around why it would be parent or guardian. And typically, that's how we have, all of the new forms that we've brought through as part of the regulations, we've been cognizant of trying to have them be formatted similarly so that they're easier for people to use. And most of the forms that we have either have a specific student form, because the issue might be a little bit different as a student. Remember, we spoke about sexual harassment and non-discrimination. Two examples of that were the forms for, say, an employee and a student may look very similar, but they're different. This one, I don't see an issue with the student and the adult version of the form being the same, parent or guardian being the same.
We may see this in response to other forms, because anywhere we're talking about this, we're really saying that in order to be participating via this form, you should have some standing, meaning that you should either be interested in your student's participation in whatever the form is dealing with. There are some students who are, I would presume, high school seniors, age 18, who are essentially legal adults.
Yep.
And I think, I'm not 100% clear on this, but I would expect that a legal adult could authorize themselves to fill out a form without the participation of their parents.
Right.
So we may see this again on other forms for other things, because when the student's 18, they can pretty much authorize themselves.
Great. I think another piece of the form aspect was, we didn't want it to be a deterrent to actually make a complaint, so if in conversation with staff, this information comes up, the staff person can fill it out on their behalf, so it doesn't have to be a roadblock to hearing such concerns. So that was one of the pieces of the conversation.
So you see a lot of the redlining of taking the questions off. That was meant for making it, streamlining the form, making it easier for people to use instead of being a roadblock to starting the conversation.
Any other ideas?
The, just to point out that the, that, what we're talking about as a form is a regulation, which, as you know, we're not really mandated to approve as a board anyway. It's the policy piece that is, the board's purview to approve. I just want to point out that there were very few changes made, and it was mostly to be clear that when we were talking about controversial issues, teachers still do have First Amendment rights as American citizens. So this is to be specific to their workplace. So if you notice in the redlining, it's while fulfilling job duties and then the rest of that sentence. That is the primary change to this. And also, we were advised to change the word sectarian to religious issues. Other than that, the policy remains intact. The purpose for us bringing it, if you remember, I mentioned at previous board meeting, I know we've talked about this at length in the policy committee, we already brought through two other policies that reference this one. So we talked about instructional materials and what was the other one? Because it was even earlier than that one. There are two other policies that mention controversial issues we've already put through as a board. And so I've tried to make a habit, working with the policy committee, that any time one policy is changed and it mentions another policy, that we make sure that one is updated also. So this is the last that are associated with that batch.
Okay, so it's a first read, so it has time to breathe still. This was a conversation on, go back to policy, they'll work on it again, and then we don't take action until it's the second read.
So which one is the regulation, which one is the policy? This is part of the form, this is?
Regulation.
The one that says?
Is 141, 142.
Appendix. So the form is?
Is regulation.
Form is regulation.
141, 142.
In other words, how we implement the policy.
So that's not the purview of the board, it's more of your discretion?
Well.
The administration's discretion?
Yes, but we, I think it's best practice that we bring it through the policy committee and have a conversation about it.
And get some feedback.
And also as a board, because we want you to understand how we're implementing the policies and you have the feedback on them, so.
And the policy is one, page 141?
Yes, and 142.
And 142. So I don't think there's really any need to send it back to the policy.
I was going to say, I don't think we need to take it back to policy unless.
To add student to the form.
Because I, yeah, I think.
Well, it's going to go back anyway to the policy for a second read?
No, it's here for, we've done our reads at the policy committee level, unless as a board, we want to make more changes when we bring it back to policy. That's how we've been.
If Laura was here today, I probably would just make a motion to approve this with the addition of the word student on the first read, because she's the policy committee chair, I'd do that.
Right.
Well, you sent the second read, this gives you time to read?
Here, yes.
So you wouldn't, you'd make the motion?
I'm not going to make it because Laura's not here and she's the chair of the committee, and I wouldn't want to do that without her here. But all we need to do is read it again at our next full board meeting, and if we all agree to add the word student to that form, and the superintendent's comfortable with it, we can do that, right?
Yeah. Did you have a question?
So we wouldn't do it now?
No, I think what Jason was saying, that generally speak, sometimes when we've brought them through and they're this short, even though it's a first read, we've just put it through as a board because we sent this out the packet and we've all read the one page and we probably take it, I think that's what you're saying. Probably.
I don't think we're going to find much on our second read.
As a board, right, because we already went through it twice as a policy committee and brought it to the board. And had it reviewed by legal counsel, again, because it was related to those other policies that we put through. But Laura's not here, I think we'll wait. And it's not so necessary to us as a school district for it to be changed. This isn't something that we're out of compliance with law because we need to move it through, so we're not in agreement with it.
Really, the only thing we're really voting on is the section in red, correct?
Red, yeah, red.
So the rest, otherwise, if?
It already existed.
Right. That's the only.
Change is red.
So the vote will be on the change?
Yeah, the change is the one sentence and three, four words in red.
Exactly. Thank you.
However, the, is the policy committee looking at, so since we made changes in the red items, they theoretically reviewed all the items not in red as well.
They read the whole thing down.
And have decided just the red items need editing or changing or updating?
Yes, the policy committee decided that, and it was also what was recommended by your board council to make the changes and also update the case law, the legal citations that go along with it.
Just making sure that, when you sent the first read, it's an opportunity to have a dialogue here and not necessarily vote on it right away, because that dialogue may sit with us for another month and indigestive.
In this case, I don't think that much digestion would be needed, but even so, we'll come back for the second read, these group, we're not talking about major changes here.
It'll most likely appear on the inside calendar next month. All right. Now, communication from Board of Education members. All set? All right, second opportunity for communication from the public, if there's anyone that stayed with us that wanted to. All set? All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
David moves, do I have a second? Second by Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.